Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Winter Haven City Commission meeting for this, the 23rd day of June 2025 at 6:00 PM. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Gallison. Commissioner Mercer.
Here.
Commissioner Dantzler.
Here.
Mayor Protam Yates, who was not present, and Mayor Birdsong.
Here. We will have the invocation by, oh, I see him, Dr. Steve Nagley from First Presbyterian Church of Winter Haven. We'd be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Vanessa Castillo, MMC City Clerk. Please stand your faithful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us bow before God in prayer. Wonderful God, as the summer thunderstorms have returned once again to our area, we're reminded of your continual care, providing what we truly need in life. We ask you now to watch over our city, protect the city workers who provide safety and services so that all of us might live well. We ask you to guide and direct the mayor, the commissioners, and the city staff this night, that they might serve the common good. And we ask you to bless all who call Winter Haven home, that we might be a blessing to all who live in our city. We thank you for this time together, this meeting, and our lives, and we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of American America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we lose one?
She was uptight.
Oh. Good evening, honorable mayor and city commissioners. We have two presentations this evening. The first, item 5A, is a proclamation recognizing Ms. Ernestine Davis. And I'll ask Ms. Davis to come to the podium. Our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Mrs. Ernestine Mason Davis has advocated over six decades for civil rights and equality, she has engaged in these causes on a local, state, and national level, and has tirelessly pursued these causes even at her current seasoned age of 84, and is continuously engaged in civic, political, educational, and humanitarian issues. Lending a hand to initiate and participate in peaceful manner to bring about change is still a passionate pursuit for her. Her motto is, "I am happy, and I'm always happy to serve the community." And whereas she was the first African-American cashier to work at Henley's Grocery Store in Florence Villa, as someone who enjoys caring for and giving back to those less fortunate, she founded and established the Concerned Citizens of Winter Haven, Inc., and its food distribution program for the community. She has established, served, and continues to serve on various boards to include East Central Polk Democratic Club Council, Lake Maud Recreation Center, now known as the Neighborhood Service Center, Polk County Opportunity Council, Haven Daycare Center, various service centers, youth athletic leagues, and the Agricultural and Labor Program, Inc., ALPE, to ensure equality is not omitted to those that are the intended benefactors. And whereas she has received numerous awards, recognitions, and proclamations from the city of Winter Haven, and continues to give a lifelong labor of service, she has been recognized as one of the 2022 Winter Haven Local Black Heroes, considered one of Winter Haven's highest honors. The 95th Bankers' Cup 2021 Woman and Citizen of the Year were presented to her by the Winter Haven Chamber of Commerce at the Celebrate Winter Haven 2021 event on September 23, 2021. And recently, she was recognized by the Polk County Historical Association as a 2025 Polk Pioneer. As a result of all her efforts and accomplishments, the city of Winter Haven and the Florence Villa neighborhood are forever grateful. Now therefore, Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby recognize June 23, 2025, as Ernestine Davis Day in the City of Winter Haven, Florida, and urges all citizens to join in recognizing and celebrating this important milestone for Mrs. Ernestine Davis. In witness whereof, he is here and to set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida to be affixed this 23rd day of June 2025. Signed, Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor, attest Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk. Debbie, I thought you were in church for a minute. Debbie. I thought you were in church for a minute with all that hooting and hollering. Church for a minute. No whistle. No whistle. Mayor and Commissioners, we have a second proclamation this evening, recognizing Mr. Thomas Robert Cooney. I don't know if Mr. Cooney is here or not. So our second proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Thomas Robert Cooney was born in Winter Haven in 1946 and has been a City of Winter Haven resident for more than 50 years, and whereas Mr. Cooney volunteers at the Museum of Winter Haven History in furtherance of their mission to preserve the history of Winter Haven for future generations. And whereas the Museum of Winter Haven History nominated Mr. Thomas Robert Cooney for Polk Pioneer status, and he was approved for the honor by the Polk County Historical Association Board of Directors. And whereas the Polk County Historical Association awards a Polk Pioneer designation to selected citizens of Polk County on an annual basis, and since 1975 has sought to preserve and promote Polk County history through the organization's ongoing oral history program. Whereas eligibility requirements for the Polk Pioneer status are for the citizen to have reached the age of 75 years or older, to have been a resident of Polk County for at least 50 years, and to complete an on-camera interview to share their memories and stories about life in Polk County. Mr. Cooney completed an on-camera, hour-long interview on January 24, 2025, and whereas the Polk County Historical Association and the City of Winter Haven are forever indebted to Mr. Cooney for sharing his life story and memories of growing up in Winter Haven. And whereas Mr. Cooney was recognized by the Polk County Historical Association as a 2025 Polk County Pioneer at their annual meeting and pioneer luncheon on June 17, 2025, at Bonnet Springs Park in Lakeland, Florida. Now therefore, Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby recognize June 23, 2025, as Thomas Robert Cooney Day in the City of Winter Haven, Florida, and urges all citizens to join in recognizing and celebrating this important milestone for Mr. Thomas Robert Cooney. In witness whereof, he is here and to set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this 23rd day of June 2025. Signed, Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor, attest Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk. The floor is yours, sir.
Well, I don't feel like I've done that much compared to Ernestine, but along with Bob Gurnert, we enjoy every Saturday showing some of our wonderful Winter Haven residents a few more things they may not know about their town. And dearly love Winter Haven. I was away for a while in my career, but I came back as soon as I could. And we have so much fun at the museum, and I was not expecting this honor at all, so I'm quite grateful, and I thank you all. All right, we have no developments of note. Commissioners, you have the minutes. Entain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes for May 21 and May 27 of 2025.
Thank you. I'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to these minutes may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes, by the same sign, hearing none. The minutes are adopted. Okay, I have, our next item is comments from the audience, and in fact, everyone that has signed up, and there are 10 people, signed up to speak to one particular item on the agenda, so at the time when we get to that item, I will call you according to the way you sign up. The next item on our agenda is ordinance's second reading, and we have ordinance O-2515. Would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, ordinance number O-2515, an ordinance amending ordinance 23-25, the 2035 Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan by revising the Future Land Use Map Series by assigning Neighborhood Suburban Future Land Use to four annexed parcels, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivviness errors, and providing an effective date. General location, four parcels generally located approximately 1,218 feet north of Old Barter Lake Wells Road, east of McLean Road, and approximately 1,333 feet west of Gary Street. The area covered by this request is 93.45 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and City Commissioners, Cassidy Land Development LLC requests the city assigned Neighborhood Suburban Future Land Use in multifamily residential low-density or R3 zoning district to four annexed parcels that total 93.45 plus or minus acre. The four parcels were annexed into the city January 27 of 2025. The petitioner intends to develop the property with single-family residential. At approximately 3.87 units per acre, it would allow for 362 family residential units. The City Commission voted April 28, 2025, to transmit this request to the Florida Department of Commerce and other state and local agencies for review. On May 28, 2025, the city received a letter from Florida Commerce indicating they have no objections to the proposed comprehensive plan changes. Additionally, letters offering no comments or objections have been received from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Department of Transportation, and the Southwest Florida Water Management District. No responses have been received from the other reviewing agencies. The requested Neighborhood Suburban Future Land Use is consistent with the surrounding city uses and designations. The requested R3 zoning district is also consistent with the Neighborhood Suburban Future Land Use designation and the surrounding city designations. All notification requirements for these requests were met. The Planning Commission heard this item on April 1, 2025, during their regular meeting, and voted to recommend approval of these requests. No members of the public spoke in favor or in opposition to the item. Staff recommends the City Commission approve ordinance O-2515 on second and final reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O-2515 on second reading and public hearing.
Thank you. I will now close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to O-2515 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes, by the same sign, hearing none. Ordinance O-2515 is adopted. Ordinance O-2516, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2516, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, by assigning multifamily residential low-density R3 zoning district to four annexed parcels, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivviness errors, and providing an effective date. General location, four parcels generally located approximately 1,218 feet north of Old Barter Lake Wells Road, east of McLean Road, and approximately 1,333 feet west of Gary Street. The area covered by this request is 93.45 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a companion ordinance to the one that was just heard. This assigns multifamily residential low-density R3 zoning to the same four annexed parcels. Staff recommends City Commission approve ordinance O-2516 on second and final reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O-2516 on second reading and public hearing.
Thank you. I will now close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to O-2516 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes, by the same sign, hearing none. O-2516 is adopted. O-2524, we are going to continue that one, and I would like to entertain a motion to continue it to the July 28 meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O-2524 for continuance.
Motion to continue.
To the July 28.
To the July 28.
July 28 meeting.
All right, I'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this particular action item may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes, by the same sign, hearing none. O-2524 will be continued until July 28. Ordinance O-2525, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance O-2515, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, relating to municipal services impact fees amending sections 5-127 and 5-128 of Article Roman numeral 10, Municipal Services Impact Fees of Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, by amending and adopting updated municipal services impact fees and charges effective October 1 of 2025, or as otherwise provided herein, articulating legislative intent in making findings, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances for severability for codification, and for the administrative correction of scrivviness errors, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the ordinance that pertains to impact fees, just some high-level points on this, as we've had two public workshops, special workshops specific to impact fees, and you've heard this during your first reading two weeks ago. We do have with us, again, this evening, from Raftellus Financial Consultants, Mr. Joe Williams. Just to recap, earlier this year, Raftellus Financial Consultants, on behalf of the city, commenced a rate study of our municipal services impact fees, which was completed and submitted to the city May 29, 2025. It provided a thorough analysis of the city's police, fire, parks, and recreation, and library services, including but not limited to the appropriate levels of service, and localized data available within four years from the current impact fee update, in order to recommend to the city as to how the city may adequately address the capital costs of infrastructure and equipment as permitted under the Florida Impact Fee Act, which is codified in Florida statutes. The study recommends that the city revise its current rate schedule for municipal services impact fees, to adjust and increase the effective rates for fire, parks, and recreation, and library impact fees, and to decrease police impact fees to net amounts that are equitable, provide for reasonable recovery without exceeding the current cost of expansion-related capital improvements associated with the provision of the respective municipal services as all is permitted and allowed within the act. These are impact fees that are assessed one time. It is a one-time fee that is assessed on new construction only. It does not apply to current residence or residential or commercial property. This is for new construction, under the premise that as growth occurs, it brings about a need to expand and increase infrastructure, and therefore, there is an impact fee that is placed upon such construction. The increase in such fees for single-family, multifamily, and commercial properties are outlined within the study and also within your fact sheet. We did host public workshops on this item that were held on June 4 and June 18 as required. There is a recommended increase in impact fees for fire services, parks, and recreation, as well as for libraries. Those would take effect if favorably approved by the City Commission on or about October 1. As allowed by law, there's a 90-day window that has to pass before those can go into play. The impact fee for police is recommended to decrease, and that would take effect if favorably considered by the City Commission tomorrow. Would be, if somebody pulled a permit tomorrow, they would have the new police impact fee within there. Staff does recommend that the City Commission approve ordinance O-2525, adopting and implementing the new impact fees that would again be applied to only new construction. And as I had shared prior, the parks and recreation and library impact fee only applies to municipal residential and multifamily housing, single-family and multifamily, whereas police and fire impact fees are assessed on both residential, commercial, industrial, pretty much every property comes into play because they depend upon police and fire services. With that, Mr. Williams is here. We can answer any questions the commission may have regarding that. I think we've discussed this at length for the past several weeks now.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Entain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O-2525 on second reading and public hearing.
Thank you. I will now close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to ordinance O-2525 may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, just wanted to note for the record that the actual study that Raftellus did is attached as part of the record for these proceedings, and that we did mention and discuss, as the city manager noted, the extraordinary circumstances experienced in the city, population growth, inflationary costs, which are the basis to recommend that we increase the fees now all at once, and that they exceed, in some regards, certainly the parks and recreation, the 50% limitation in the act. So just for the record, those are on there, and would just want the record to reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney.
You have one question.
Yes.
And this is an exercise in giggles and grins, but is there any way, say, we'd done this five years ago, how much money we would have raised, additional money we would have raised? Is there any way, any way to do it on the back of a napkin, or is that too complicated to even estimate?
It would be an estimation, but we could go back and look at all of the permits that were pulled over the last, you know, give four years, five years, however far back you want to go.
Five years or something.
And provide a calculation. It wouldn't be to the, maybe to the penny, but it would be a pretty good estimate.
Talking millions, you think? Are we talking hundreds of thousands?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
Smart guy behind you. I can't remember your name again. Do you have any way of knowing that? What was your name again? I'm sorry. Can't remember what I had for breakfast half the time.
That's all right. Joe Williams from Raftellus.
Sorry.
No problem.
Can you figure that?
We did not apply the impact fees historically, but we do have a forecast looking forwards. And just as an example for you, parks and recreation, again, this is probably the highest increase, and it assumes trends similar. So if you just kept your existing fee the same over the next 10 years, if growth materialized how we forecast in the study, you collect about... how we forecast in the study, you collect about eleven million dollars of park impact fees. By adopting the new fee from, again, this from new developers, it'd be closer to forty million dollars over the next ten years.
Well, there's our pickleball courts right there.
Over ten years. So, it's about thirty million dollars over ten years, just for the parks.
Theoretically, back five years, we would have probably raised an additional fifteen million, probably based on that math. So, we could have, we could have built a lot of stuff with that, had we done this five years ago. Okay. Just semantics, that's all.
Exercise.
And we had discussed, you know, the way that the statute governs impact fees now. Impact fees are no longer indexed. They don't increase year over year by CPI indexing of any sort, is my recommendation, and this will come back in three years' time, that we do another study at that point, because that's the allowance timeframe when we can look at them again, so that we're always staying on time with impact fees, you know, analysis.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposes by the same sign. Do we need a roll call, since this needs to be?
No, no, I just think that minute should reflect that all four of you have voted in the affirmative for that, so we did need to have four votes to.
We did have four votes.
Thank you. For it to be effective.
All right. The next item is the consent agenda, and what I'd like to do is, I would like to take out ten F, out of the consent agenda, and entertain a motion to approve the other items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Proven consent agenda as a whole, with the exception of ten F, like to remove that, and, but, all the other items on the consent agenda, I recommend that we vote those entirety.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to any of the other items that are going to be voted on at this current time on the consent agenda may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposes by the same sign, hearing none. The consent agenda is adopted, except for item ten F. Item ten F is, which is the Florida Senate Bill Two C Compliance Immigration Task Force two-eight-seven-G Memorandum of Agreement, MOA. So, the way I want to do this is, could you give us a recap, an analysis, or a statement on this, City Manager?
Certainly. So, this is item ten F. This is Florida Senate Bill Two C Compliance. On February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Governor Ron DeSantis signed Senate Bill Two C into law. You may recall, this was part of a special session that occurred prior to the regular legislative session in Tallahassee. Bill Two C provides resources that empower local agencies to support the federal government in arresting, detaining, and beginning the deportation process for criminal illegal aliens. The two-eight-seven-G program is a partnership initiative between U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, also known as ICE, and state and local enforcement agencies. Under the agreement with ICE, local agencies specify the delegated immigration enforcement, specifies the local immigration enforcement powers, which allow officers to question individuals about their immigration status, serve and execute immigration warrants, make arrests for immigration violations, and initiate removal proceedings. As it relates to the MOA, the Winter Haven Police Department will honor legal requests, also referred to as detainers, from the federal immigration agencies when required by Florida law. Ask about citizenship status during the arrest booking process, traffic stops, and any other citizen contact as directed by state law, and share that information with ICE if lawfully requested. And then assist in the safe transfer of individuals already in our custody to federal authorities. The police department will not stop people based on immigration status, ask for immigration papers, or detain anyone just because they are undocumented unless directed by a court or ICE. In essence, what this comes down to is, we have state statute that gives us, it's basically a mandate put upon the cities to participate under the state's Senate Bill Two C. Again, it came about from the Immigration Special Session. It is no different, really, than what we do with other federal agencies. As I mentioned to you the other night, as well as Chief Monroe and Assistant City Manager Byrd, we work directly with federal agencies such as DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency, Homeland Security, that if they are exercising some jurisdictional authority within our community and require assistance from local law enforcement, we work in partnership with them in that regard. Winter Haven police officers are not going to be out on the street, as you have seen on the news, in nondescript uniforms, wearing masks, pulling people off the street. If we make an arrest of somebody that has committed a crime, we are required to ask about immigration status at that point. It basically becomes somewhat of a secondary offense in the activity that we're involved in, that we're detaining them for. We have to notify ICE at that point if, in fact, there is, if it's an illegal situation, if it's a person that's undocumented. It is up to ICE at that point to give us direction on how they wish to pursue with that. We work directly with Polk County Sheriff's Office, that has an ICE designee assigned to them. If we arrest somebody and take them to Polk County for book-in, and there is an immigration warrant out for them at that point, Polk County works directly through that ICE designee to determine what is the procedure from that point forward. Again, it is simply a process of us participating in partnership and as mandated by state law with ICE, that if we identify somebody through our contact with them as a result of a traffic stop, a domestic battery, a criminal infraction, whatever that case may be, and we identify them as being an illegal alien, that we have to provide that notice to ICE. At that point, they give us direction on what we are supposed to do.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say this, Mayor and Commissioners, this is not, and I'll ask Assistant City Manager Byrd to weigh in on this, this is not dissimilar to what we have done historically. This is a practice, like I said, with DEA, with Homeland Security, with other federal agencies. In this case, is it comes about because of a state special session bill. It is memorialized through a memorandum of understanding between the city and ICE. I will say also that if, for reason, the commission votes to not engage in this memorandum of understanding, we are then not in compliance with state law at that point, and that can jeopardize state funding that comes to the city. So, that is somewhat of the stick that comes along with this.
So, okay, all right. First of all, let me just say this. Those of you that's in the audience, we need your undivided attention. There should not be known chit-chat while anyone is speaking, all right? That's the ground rules. That's what we abide by here. So, the first thing that I'm going to do is I'm going to entertain a motion on this particular item. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ten F.
Mr. Mayor, for, this is, oh.
MOA for?
Yeah, it's the consent agreement, ten F, the Florida Senate Bill Two C Compliance.
All right, thank you. Now, I will close the commission meeting and open the public hearing, and all ten of the people that have signed up to speak will be able to speak. And as I call your name, would you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. And I would just like to request that, as you come forward, after the first person or the second person, I would like for the ten people not to come and say the identical same thing, if I could indulge you to do that. All right, the first person is Kristy, is it Richardson?
Richardson.
Richardson, all right. Come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Kristy Renardson. My address is two-three-five Sixth Avenue Northwest, Winter Haven. Again, my name is Kristy Renardson. My family moved from Illinois in nineteen fifty-seven to this location. My father, a carpenter and painter, hoped to find a job associated with the new space station at Cape Canaveral. We had family serving the Air Force Base at Barto Air Base at that time, and the opportunities seemed endless. Having said that, I feel it's important for people to know that I've been established in Winter Haven for a long time, and many of you sitting up there know that, and many of you back there know that. My older grand, my older daughter graduated from high school with Team Michael, so you know that's been quite a while. And for a little more levity, because I'm nervous, I was Little Miss Winter Haven in nineteen, at the age of thirteen. My husband was in the graduating class of nineteen sixty-six, after having experienced the integration of Winter Haven High School in nineteen sixty-five. At that time, young African-Americans in Winter Haven could choose if they wanted to go to Winter Haven High School. My husband remembers less than a dozen black students entering the high school at that time. Lakeland High School documented two out of nearly six hundred graduates to be African-American. I have to wonder, how far has our country and city come relative to the diversity and equal treatment for all? I'm not here to protest or to argue, because I think this is a done deal, number one. I fear I have to disagree with Team Michael, relative to the mandate. This statute has essentially been in effect since nineteen ninety-six. And when you refer to what happens if we don't comply, it's threats and intimidation from the federal government. So, you know, the city commissioners, I know that you feel pressure, there's so many examples around the United States, because you don't want to lose grant money, you don't want to lose support. But however, I think you have a population that in all consciousness you're responsible for. Even though this program offers education and communication to law enforcement, responsibilities carry a weight unlike that anybody has ever experienced. The additional responsibilities, my hopes are, to not lose sight of daily, or let's say, more usual responsibilities of upholding the law, ensuring our town is a safe place to be. This includes responding to domestic violence, upholding speeding and traffic violations, de-escalating potential violent situations, reducing major crime, et cetera. To avoid racial profiling with the consciousness of integrity and respect. To make sure a positive police presence is not jeopardized. Sacrificing the trust that the Winter Haven citizens have with the police is paramount. To maintain dedication, courage, and good judgment, and a commitment serving all of the Winter Haven community, and professionalism, with professionalism and empathy. Personal note, these are scary times, but we're all in it together, moving forward with understanding, communication, and for the population to have oversight and diligence, all of us in this room, in this city, in this state, in this world, is imperative for a future. So, I am not for ten F.
Thank you. Matthew?
My name is Matthew Crowley. My address is nine zero seven one Thomasville Drive, Winter Haven, Florida, three-three-eight-eight-four. Good evening, Commissioners, city staff, and neighbors. My name, like I said, is Matthew Crowley. I have been a lifelong resident of Winter Haven. I'm a public school employee, a husband, a father, and someone who believes that public safety should be rooted in trust, not fear. I'm here tonight to speak in strong opposition to the proposed agreement between the Winter Haven Police Department and Immigration and Customs Enforcement, also known as ICE. Let's be honest about what this is for a second. This agreement would allow our local officers to take on the role of federal immigration agents. It would entangle our police department with a federal agency whose mission is not local safety, but deportation. That is a serious mistake. This move does not make Winter Haven safer. It makes people, our neighbors, afraid to call for help, afraid to report domestic violence, workplace abuse, or dangerous conditions, because they fear that contact with the police could lead to detention or deportation. We have seen this happen in other cities. These kinds of agreements don't just break apart families, they break apart the trust between law enforcement and the communities they have sworn to serve. And when that trust is gone, everyone is less safe. Let me also be clear. This is not about shielding criminals. Our officers already have the tools that they need to address serious crime. This agreement, all this agreement does is shift the focus away from actual public safety and turn our officers into agents of an immigration agenda that has no place in local policing. It invites racial profiling. It increases the chances of wrongful detention, wrongful detentions that we've seen in our own state. And it opens the door to costly lawsuits that cities like ours cannot afford. But beyond policy, this is about values. What kind of city do we want to be? Do we want to be a place where immigrant families, many of whom have lived here for years and some for generations, contribute to our economy, send their kids to our schools, are made to feel hunted, unwelcome, and unsafe? Or do we want to be a city that leads with compassion first, that serves all of its residents with dignity, and that builds public trust instead of breaking it? This agreement was placed on the consent agenda as if it were routine. It is not. It is a fundamental question about who we are as a community. I urge this commission, please, vote no. Do not let our city be defined by fear. Let it be defined by fairness, by safety, and by the belief that every person in Winter Haven deserves to live free from fear. And in fact, just to bring some light to this, ICE previously shut down this task force in two thousand and twelve, because it did lead to widespread racial profiling. Over in Arizona, Sheriff Joe Arapio, his task force raided Latino businesses and pulled over Latino drivers to look for immigrants. This has happened before, and it is bound to happen again. I just don't want it to happen here in the city that I'm raising my daughter in. Thank you.
Juanita? Juanita?
Juanita Zavorchuk, three forty-eight East Tillman Avenue, Lake Wells. As you can see, I just, you know, made mine shorter, because Matthew did such a wonderful job of explaining all of the reasons why one would not want to support this kind of memorandum. But anyway, I'd first like to thank the commission for affording me the opportunity to speak. I'm not a resident of Winter Haven, but I frequently shop and attend activities here, and I've always felt it to be a safe and very friendly place. and I've always felt it to be a safe and very friendly place. I came this evening to express my serious concerns regarding the memorandum of agreement that would direct your city police to partner with the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Officers, ICE. As I was listening, I was wondering, if this were a law that you were mandated to do, why do you need a memorandum of agreement? I don't quite understand that. It seems like there must be some leeway as to whether you would agree, to whether you wanted to participate in this, otherwise, why would you need to do what you're doing tonight? But anyway, I believe such a policy would have detrimental effects on your community, their safety, the trust, and overall well-being. And I'm also concerned that if Winter Haven supports this partnership, it will pave the way to similar partnerships in neighboring cities like Lake Wales. And a lot of times, you know, we look to Winter Haven, frankly, because you seem to be a little more progressive in some of the things that you undertake, and I would hate to see that happen at Lake Wales, but they might follow right along with you. I urge you to consider the far-reaching consequences of this directive and to prioritize policies that foster trust and safety for all residents and visitors to your city. Please let your police department focus on its core mission of community policing and ensuring justice for everyone within its jurisdiction. You know, I was an ESL teacher in New York State for 20 years, and I dealt with a lot of children and young adults who were in a situation where ICE might have been coming after them. And I want to tell you that when you break trust, they clam up, and you're going to have, you know, you're going to have people who are afraid to tell you who it is that stabbed so-and-so, or who it is that they know stole from that store or whatever. And, you know, this is the way you do it. This is the way you break trust. So anyway, thank you for your time, and I really hope you'll consider voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Haus.
Oh, no, 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 I think I signed the wrong sheet. I thought it was a, it was a standing sheet and a tenon sheet, so I apologize.
Could you pronounce your name? I'm just...
I did the, if it's a Dutch name, I, I...
I just...
Thank you so much. It's a Dutch name, the full Dutch name is Hans van der Niemandyk, but it did not fit on that sheet. So I apologize.
I just want the rest of the audience to know that.
I am not a resident of Winter Haven, but I do implore to vote no on this. Matthew Crowley said everything that I wanted to say. I'm originally from the Netherlands. We pride ourselves over there, I'm an American right now, but we pride ourselves in trusting our police officers and know what they are doing is the right thing. I do think this is not the right thing. I always enjoy coming to Winter Haven, not 100% sure if I'm going to do that again. I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you. Bev Hansen.
Hello, my name is Bev Hansen, 1962 Eloise Cove Drive in Winter Haven. I'm a fairly new resident to Winter Haven. I am horrified that this is even on the agenda, because this paves the way for racial profiling, misogyny, and we shouldn't stand for it. Everyone before me has said what I want to say, and shame on you if you vote yes. You absolutely must vote no. I'm also a small business owner. You are paving the way for outrageous lawsuits, racial profiling again, it cannot stand. I'm considering that, just like the Dutch person, that this is not the place for me. And if you continue and you vote yes, shame on you, shame on every one of you. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tina Polk Kinamath, and I live at 2500 21st Street Northwest, Winter Haven. Two weeks ago, I was here as we celebrated in our community with Proclamations for Pride and Juneteenth. Tonight, I come before you to ask a few questions, a few you've already answered. One was whether or not this was mandatory, and you seem to say it's so, but if it is, then I don't understand the point, like someone else was making, that you have to sign this and enter it in. The Polk County Sheriff's Department has put 300 people into the hands of U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement since January, and only a small fraction of those have been accused of violent felonies. I believe that we, as Americans, have been deceived and lied to, and the facts do not justify the narrative that the American people are being told. We're not just taking hardened criminals and murderers, we're detaining neighbors and friends and loyal employees and employers. There's approximately 13,000 or 24% of our city's population that this could affect. Honestly, I thought Winter Haven was better than this. I have lived here for 65 years. I have watched the immigrants that were trying to force out and detain, and they do not just pick fruit and build homes and cut lawns. They serve in restaurants and hospitality, they serve in positions like the police and the fire departments, they're teachers, they're business owners, and many other positions in our own society. Like all of us, they just seek a better life. These people are not a threat to us or our way of life, and if anything, they've made it better. They have come to this, to our state, and they've helped our economy, and many are in the process of obtaining legal citizenship, which I understand is not an easy process, and it's very costly. So I ask, what about those people? Many have their entire life and family here, and I wonder why our country doesn't spend the government monies to make this process easier instead of more difficult for these people. It seems like our biggest concern in government today is to protect the wealthy. We have all witnessed across the news the manner in which the people, and notice I say the word "people," we must not forget that the immigrants that are being removed from their homes, jobs, and schools are human beings. How would it be different in our city? It is great to say that in this memorandum, we're not going to target people because of their skin color, but do we really believe this? And do we think that an online course will suffice to turn the police officers into ICE agents? Are we to be like cities in which the mask, people come out with no uniforms or ID and pull and abduct and detain people right off the streets and put them in jails, sometimes in other states and countries, and they separate these families? And in my opinion, this all opens a real door for human trafficking and sexual assaults to occur. I ask respectfully that you consider all of the people in our city and not just comply because other cities have or because the governor wants you to. Do you want our community to be afraid to go to work, to go to school, to go to church? How does that make us better? I understand that we're a small community, and in the scheme of our city and state, but if not here, then where shall we stand against this inhumanity and injustice? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marleah Yates. I live at 1032 Spirit Lake Road, Winter Haven. I thought about all the topics that I wanted to cover, and there's a lot that come to mind. And I think that the one that comes to mind the most is my coworker. I worked with her for about a year. She was Mexican, she spoke Spanish, she was learning English. She went out last year because she had a baby, and after the inauguration, she never came back to work. I have wondered, did she leave the United States? Was she deported? Because there was no information, or our employer simply did not tell us. I work. I have worked, I work with people that are Hispanic, that don't speak English. They are some of the kindest, most hardworking people you could ever meet. They are humans. This ICE is inhuman. It is immoral. You, if you believe that what is happening in other states will not happen in Winter Haven, then you are wrong. The moment that you give police officers the ability to become ICE agents, you will see people being detained and deported, people that have lived here, whether or not they are legal or illegal immigrants. This has happened around the state of Florida, and this will happen here if you allow this to pass. It is disgraceful. It is outrageous. It makes me angry to think of the people that have been deported, the lives that have been ripped apart, the children that have been deported, the children that live without families because their parents were illegal or were working toward immigration status and ripped out of immigration offices by ICE agents. Florida has a large population of Hispanic people. ICE is racial profiling. They target people that look a certain way. They target people that speak certain languages, that don't speak English. And there are recorded cases of legal people who were born in the United States being detained by ICE. Or they are deported, in the case of Kilmar Arrego Garcia. He was deported. He wasn't here illegally. If you pass this, you will be compliant with everything that happens, with every person that is illegally detained, that is harassed, harassed, the hatred that will spread because of this will be on your hands. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Lewis Devilla, 1335 Melissa Mile Road, Winter Haven. Friends, friends, neighbors, and esteemed commissioners, again, my name is Lewis, and I am here today to speak unequivocally against this proposed memorandum with ICE. This agreement, which seeks to deputize local law enforcement to perform federal immigration duties, is fundamentally at odds with the values we hold dear in our community. Our local police department should be focused on building trust with our residents, ensuring public safety for everyone, regardless of their immigration status. When local officers become entangled in federal immigration enforcement, it erodes that trust. It creates an environment of fear, leading to under-reporting of crimes and a less safe community for all of us. Furthermore, these agreements have a documented history of leading to racial profiling and civil rights abuses. They strain police resources, they divert attention and funding from local issues that directly impact our daily lives. I believe in communities that are inclusive, equitable, and safe for everyone. This program does the exact opposite. It divides us. It fosters fears and undermines the very principles that this community believes in and the very principles of community policing. I urge this commission to vote no on this memorandum. Let us instead focus on policies that strengthen our community, protect our residents, and uphold the civil liberties of every individual that calls Winter Haven home. That's all.
Thank you.
David Kincaid, 105 South Ellway Avenue, Lake Alford, Florida. Honorable Mayor and esteemed commissioners, it was mentioned that Winter Haven PD will not be masking up and putting on body armor and going out and raiding neighborhoods for immigrants. You may not be participating in that activity, but by passing this bill, this, what's being voted on today, you are complicit in that activity. You are behaving in a system that is complicit with that activity. I don't need to tell you, you've watched the news, you have seen lawful residents being deported from this country, you have seen people have their visas revoked and then targeted by ICE for things that they have said under the First Amendment guarantees that they have under the United States Constitution. You have seen U.S.-born citizens detained in ICE activities. If one, one Winter Haven resident is detained by ICE under immigration, that is a failure of the city government whole, as a whole. Just today, the U.S. senior, the U.S. courts ruled that rapid deportations to countries that immigrants have no ties to can be done. This is a failure of the due process that we are guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution. If you vote yes on this today, today of all days, when you, breathing the same air in the same room that you honored Ernestine Davis, on Ernestine Davis Day, if you vote yes to this today or any day, you are doing that woman a great disservice. And to quote another civil rights leader, well, I'll get to that in a second. You mentioned, there is no carrot to this, it is only stick. Tallahassee is threatening you with pulling grants and other funding. If you vote no on this, there is, there may, not guaranteed, there may be trouble. But to quote another civil rights leader, John Lewis, "It is your obligation to engage in good trouble, necessary trouble, in order to redeem the soul of America." I'm not going to hope that you vote no on this, I'm not going to ask you to vote no on this, I am going to implore you. I can't demand, but I am going to implore that each and every one of you votes no on this. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Birdsong, great name. Esteemed City Council members, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is Kit Taylor, I live at 105 Ellen Court in Winter Haven, Florida. I've been a resident of this lovely city since I moved here in 1988. I'm a lifelong native Floridian, a retired public school teacher, and the lucky husband of Pam Taylor. Oh, and also the yoga student of Ms. Christie here. I rise today to address questions and concerns regarding the consideration of the implementation of the Senate Bill 2C memorandum agreement, MOA. As described by the memorandum from... As described by the memorandum from Police Chief Monroe, I have some specific questions. Under these agreements, officers can question individuals about their immigration status. This is the can section. Florida SB 2C does not require law enforcement officers to ask citizenship status of all traffic stops and citizens encountered. It's not required under Florida law. If questioned by a law enforcement officer, I'm wondering, will the individuals be made aware of their rights similar to, um, required by a memorandum warning such as you have the right to remain silent and are not legally required to answer questions about your birthplace, citizenship or your entry into the country? Also, you're not required to provide name and show papers to ICE officers. Will they be made aware of that? Additionally, officers can serve execution immigration warrants, make arrests for immigration violations. ICE warrants are administrative, not judicial. Unlike criminal arrest warrants signed by the judge, ICE warrants are issued by ICE officials for civil immigration violations. My question, will the Winter Haven Police Department require, require ICE agents to provide an administrative or judicial warrant? Officers can initiate removal proceedings. This seems to fly in the face of the assertion by Chief Monroe that this will not have an economic impact. I don't know about you all, but I've done paperwork and I hate it. So these activities are bound to increase the strain on police, Winter Haven Police Department in manpower and detention accommodations. Also, officers can assist in the safe transfer of individuals already in custody for federal authorities. My question, will the Winter Haven Police Department ensure that judicial or administrative warrants are valid before transferring detainees to ICE custody? ICE has been documented detaining individuals without showing any warrant judicial or administrative. Moving on to the next section as it relates to the MOA, the Winter Haven Police Department will, now this is not can, this is the will section. We are going to honor local requests called detainees from federal immigration agencies when required by Florida law. Also assist in the safe transfer of individuals already in custody to federal authorities. ICE policy requires the finding of probable cause to believe the subject is a removable alien before issuing a detainer. My question, will the Winter Haven Police Department acquire a finding of probability cause to ensure the subject is removable alien before issuing a detainer? Law enforcement, I'm sorry, local law enforcement agencies that honor ICE detainees could face legal challenges and potential liability, especially if the detainer is later found to be invalid. In this will section, the officer will ask citizenship status during the arrest booking process, all, all traffic stops and any other citizen contact as directed by state law. Again, uh, the SB 2C does not require, it's not law that they're required to ask for their immigration status and share this information with ICE if lawfully requested. As mentioned earlier, no SB 2C does not require law enforcement officers to ask for citizenship status at all traffic stops and citizenship encounter. This seems like an invitation to subjective intimidation. Come on down, boys. Let's just find out who's gonna sweat a little bit. Sorry, I thought that would be part of my, I have to put there. Finally, the Winter Haven Police Department will not detain anyone just because they are undocumented unless directed by a court or ICE, or ICE. ICE has demonstrated that they are more interested in meeting quotas than following the law. Stephen Miller, White House Deputy Chief of Staff for Policy, is reported to be pushing ICE to round up 300, 3,000 immigrants a day. No focus on criminality. I just got a little bit more.
Go ahead.
No focus on criminality or actually making our streets safer. Isn't it puzzling we are sold a policy to eliminate hardened violent criminals, but ICE is focusing on work sites and the employed? And finally, officers participating in programs receiving training online and operation under direction and oversight from ICE. Will the Winter Haven Police, Police Officers be empowered to issue, to ensure ICE has followed due process and provide warrants for all detainees? Mass men showing up and detaining a person without a warrant isn't law enforcement. It's kidnapping. Mass men showing up, detaining a person without warrants backed up by uniformed police officers isn't law enforcement. It's fascism. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. That's the last person that has signed up to speak. However, if there's anyone else, I will give you a final opportunity if you didn't sign up. You're right. Second page. John Hill.
I'm John Hill, 1309 Brenmore Avenue, Lake Wells, 33853. So I'm not a citizen of Winter Haven, but like Juanita, I come here often and enjoy my time here. For full disclosure, I'm the Chair of the Polk County Democratic Party. We're gonna circle back to that in a minute. But I'm also a Rotarian. And in Rotary, we have a set of principled questions called the four-way test. We say these in every single meeting we have and it goes like this. Of the things we think, say and do, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Nothing about this MOA passes the four-way test. The push to deport undocumented immigrants is an overreaching response to a series of lies and misrepresentations used as racist propaganda to scare our communities. While there are criminals who have entered this country illegally and should be sent back to their country of residence despite what the Supreme Court just ruled today, the policy being rolled out targets all undocumented immigrants regardless of criminal history. This targeting is tearing apart our communities and society. It is creating fear, terror and distrust every step of the way. And for anyone on the dais who may confuse their politics and religion, let me be very clear. Voting to accept this MA is not a style of governance that is Christ-like. Looking at this group of commissioners, I see five, four, four, who are most concerned with winning reelection to their commission seat and maintaining a grip on power that leaves out the best interest of the community. This MOA opens up a sanctioned pathway to economic damage, continued distrust between the community and the brave individuals who wear a badge and take an oath to protect all of us. And it will be a dark stain on your legacy as the governing body of the city. Now back to what I do as the Chair. We are watching as a community and we will find and elect commissioners who represent all of us, not the few of you. Vote accordingly because we, the people, will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Sims. Victor Sims. Victor Sims.
Good evening, councilmembers, esteemed residents and guests of Winter Haven. While many of you have decided-
State your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Victor Sims, 4017 Oak Preserve Drive, Winter Haven, Florida. All right, thank you. While many of you have, may have decided where you're going to vote on this issue, as someone raised in the church, it is important for me to raise a specific scripture. Leviticus Chapter 19, verses 33 through 34. "When a foreigner resides among you in your land, do not mistreat them. The foreigner resides among you must be treated as your native-born. Love them as yourself, for you were foreigners in Egypt." The Bible's call is very clear. Don't just tolerate immigrants. Welcome them, protect them and love them. And it doesn't say only if they have papers. It says because you know what it means to be vulnerable. T. Michaels is actually correct. We don't have to vote to opt into this. As he said, this is to memorialize this. This will be a memorial of the life of families. I want you to imagine this because in my day job, I worked to protect young people, worked to keep them together in their families domestically, but I also see what happens when we think about internationally. A little boy gets dropped off at school in the morning, just like every other day. He eats his breakfast with his classmates, aces a spelling test and maybe even laughs on the playground. But when the bell rings and he walks to the front office to get picked up, no one is there. The hours pass and finally someone sits down and tells him, your mom was pulled over and taken by ICE. She's gone. And just like that, his entire world is changed. Now that story may be hypothetical, but the impact of it describes, described is very real. As someone who works in child welfare, I've seen what happens when families are separated. And I'm here to say, Winter Haven should not be in the business of causing that kind of harm. We've never been a city known for tearing families apart. We've been a community where neighbors look out for one another, where teachers know their students by name, where working parents, no matter where they were born, wake up every day trying to give their kids the best life they can. Cooperating with ICE changes that. It turns our local police into federal agents. It erodes the trust that keeps our neighborhoods safe. It makes parents afraid to report crimes and children afraid to believe that anyone will come when they need help. Let's be real, this isn't about law and order, it's about fear. And fear has never been what defines this great city of Winter Haven. When you separate a child from a, from their parent, you don't just enforce a policy, you create trauma. That trauma doesn't disappear. It lands in our schools, it lands in our churches, it lands in our child welfare system and it stays here. It becomes our soil. So I'm urging to you tonight to vote no on approving this memorandum. Vote no because the Winter Haven I know believes in family. You see, I didn't grow up with a lot of stability. In fact, I grew up in the foster care system. And like a lot of kids in the foster care system, I moved from place to place as well as town to town. And I'll be honest, there are cities where I did not feel accepted. There are places that saw me as a problem and not a person. But Winter Haven was different. When others shut the door, a couple in this city opened theirs. They didn't see a foster kid. They saw a child who deserved to be loved. They didn't ask where I came from. They focused on where I wanted to go and where I wanted to belong. This city, this city has always meant love to me. It's meant welcome. It's meant something, it's meant someone choosing to say, you belong here. And that's why I'm speaking today because cooperating with ICE doesn't reflect the Winter Haven that I know, the Winter Haven that I was adopted in. We are better than fear. We are better than silence and we are better than policies that punish people for wanting the same kind of safety I was once given. Thank you.
Jim Edwards. Jim Edwards.
Good evening. My name is Jim Edwards. I'm at 208 East Lake Howard Drive. I graduated from Winter Haven High School. I grew up here. I left for 45 years and just returned this year. And I, I, I'm here tonight in opposition of this proposal. And as many of the other speakers have eloquently already stated, most of what I've wanted to say, I'll keep it short. While this proposal claims to focus on criminal illegal aliens, ICE's own data tells a different story. Two-thirds of the people ICE has detained this year had no criminal convictions at all and more than nine in 10 were not convicted of any violent or property offenses. ICE is targeting peaceful residents, not public safety threats. The agenda says there's no financial impact, but that's misleading. This program shifts city resources, officers' time, training and public trust away from our real local priorities and toward federal enforcement goals over which we have no control. I ask you to uphold our values and our constitution. Don't deputize our officers to serve a federal agenda that has become discriminatory, chaotic and divorced from justice. Thank you.
Scott Klein. Scott Klein. All right. Is there anyone else? Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Terry Yates. I live at 605 Robert Avenue here in Winter Haven. I'm a nurse and these people have very eloquently stated everything that I'm thinking. Aside from the fact that, you know, I grew up in the restaurant industry and I've worked around so many people of color, people who didn't have a lot of money coming up. These people are amazing people. They're the fabric of our country. And in the nursing community, again, we have so many people that are caring for, no matter how powerful or how powerless you are, we are caring for you. We are the heart of this nation, okay? It's, it's sort of insane to me that we are in this spot because, you know, growing up, I grew, I was born in 80. I remember when our government was very against communism, was very, what is going on? What is going on with our leadership? I, I didn't prepare anything to say, but I did want to be here because for one mayor, I want you to think about what happened with the stop and frisk law up in New York and what happened to your people there. Because that's gonna start not only happening to all of our people here, but once they are done with the minority community, they are gonna come after the disableds. They're gonna come after the vulnerable, they're gonna come after the poor, okay? And these are the people that worked their way up, just like me. I grew up with a single mother and I, again, moved from place to place to place. And I, again, was, found myself in communities where I didn't feel like I belonged. I took an oath to do no harm. I took an oath to do no harm. And I took it. I, I work as a nurse because I, I don't feel like I'm employed by any one certain employer. I'm employed by God. And I feel like all of you are too, whether you realize this or not. And if you vote this in, every single one of you, all of you are getting up in age, all of you. As I sit here and look at you. I, I, listen, you might feel very powerful and big right now, but one day, one day you will be that person in the hospital bed powerless, absolutely powerless. And at that point, if you vote yes for this, may God have mercy on your soul because I know many, many healthcare workers, both nurses and doctors, that won't.
Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sheila Belt, 153 Audubon Court, Winter Haven. And I'd like to say one thing. The Senate Bill 2C was a way to basically get all of you guys in rock and a hard, between a rock and a hard place. And everybody has been fussing at you. You didn't do this. And you're getting stuck because you have no choice but to do this. And I am the mother of four grown people. And I always taught them, when you're between a rock and a hard place, figure out what are you gonna do next? And you know it's a rock and a hard place because they even changed the language. So no one is now an undocumented immigrant, they're an illegal alien. And this poor gentleman had to say that because he had no choice. And now you have no choice. I understand that. I'm not gonna talk about any of you because I do understand what happens when you're between a rock and a hard place. But what you need to do is start thinking about, what are we gonna do next? So the questions that you have to ask is, who are they gonna ask? Who are they gonna stop? Are they going to require papers? Are they gonna require papers of everyone that's in the company of the person that they're dealing with? they're dealing with? What is considered a crime? When the county has been apprehending people, most of the people that they have stopped have not violated any law. And the ones that they have is basically driving without a license. 16-year-olds do that. Are you going to ask them? Are you illegal? We were in the New York City area when there was stop and frisk, and it ended up with people getting killed. Okay? I expect all of you to vote to pass this. But I do expect all of you to be solid citizens and do the right thing next. Because that's the only thing that you can do, and that's the only thing that your governor, not mine, your governor, and the Senate, and the, and the legislature decided to heap upon you so you can get yelled at and not them. So to make sure that you don't do that, make sure that you remember who you are and who we are. We are your people, and you are our people, and the police are our people as well. We don't want to hate any of them, we don't want to hate any of you. And you're going to have to treat everyone that you meet on Winter Haven streets, and whenever the police will stop any of these people in their homes, for whatever reason, that they're our people too. Thank you.
All right, we got two final people, is that it? Because most of you are saying, repeating the same thing, and I actually not too.
Why won't you?
Me either. My name's Karen Wellsell. I live at 3310 Fox Ridge Drive in Winter Haven. I've lived in Winter Haven for over 25 years. I'm, I'm a proud co-founder of an organization that supports public education in this state. And I'm here today as a citizen of the United States, a country that was founded under the principle that all men are created equal, and they are guaranteed a right to due process under law. What is happening in this country today is such a vile discredit to all that we have fought for and all that we believe to be true. We see it happening every day, citizens, legal immigrants, people who came to this country for a better life, one that we used to believe was our greatest legacy. And now you are planning to allow your police officers and others to sign this agreement to tear families apart, to take mothers and fathers away from their homes and jobs and their children. This is happening without the benefit of verifying who they are, without officers giving them the right to legal counsel, without officers identifying themselves, wearing masks to cover their face, and they are removing these people from their communities. Your own law enforcement officers who live and work in this city, in this small community, who may attend the same church as those they are arresting, whose children may play with their kids or go to school together, those parents who may actually work within the city, helping you and me with all of the things that a city and a community must do. And speaking of the children, I can only imagine the fear these children live with, the horrible memories they will have for the rest of their lives. What kind of damage would this have on their future and their education and their involvement in their community? And then you expect those same officers to go home at night, look at their neighbors in their face, knowing that they have arrested and torn apart families. Shame on you. Shame on every single one of you who are contemplating and or will vote for this amendment, this memo. You know what it is. Just because there is a racist convicted convicted felon felon now sitting in the White House does not mean that we have to follow his dangerous actions. Please vote no. Do not support this memo. Thank you for your time.
I have one other person. Come, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Who is it? You?
My name is Catherine Vaughn. My address is 961 North Heron Circle, Winter Haven, Florida. I don't like public speaking, so I apologize if my voice is very shaky. I'm a teacher. I'm here for my students, many of who are from Haiti and Mexico, who are afraid for themselves and their families. You know, I, I was kind of offended by the statement that we're just simply following process, we're simply doing something that we've done with many other agencies. Many other agencies aren't going against the Constitution and being ruled against by federal judges because they will not allow for due process. Our Constitution says due process. ICE is not doing that. What we know is that we're constantly being told that something is one thing, but then it's another, right? We're being told that will never happen. How many times have we heard, that will never happen? And it happens directly after that, right? One example is, they said, we're only going after illegal immigrants. That was untrue, right? It was only illegal immigrants. Then it was immigrants without papers. Then it was, let's take away those papers, let's revoke those visas, and then we're going after them. Oh, we only want to go after people who are breaking the law. But then they're going to their court hearings and being arrested at court when they're following the law. So we've seen, in this process alone, we have seen that will never happen actually happen. So we are being told these small concessions is all that's needed, but that's not true. They continue to be larger and larger concessions. And so I guess for the record, what I wanted to come up here and say is that you're going to do what you're going to do, but stop, stop telling us it's one thing because we're smart enough to know. Give us the respect to tell us what it actually is and why you're voting for it. I would really appreciate that because you have an opportunity. If you're just memorializing a vote, you have an opportunity to memorialize an opposition to fascism, and you should take that opportunity today.
All right, I'm going to close. I'm closing the public hearing.
I'm not going to say the same thing they can say. That's, that's definitely.
Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alma Fernandez. I'm a little nervous. I didn't come prepared. I just came to learn and listen how the, the process is here. I live at 172 Lake Smart Circle. It's in Winter Haven. I've only been here for five years. But my thing is, you're opening up a can of worms here. Everybody's talking emotional, I want to talk financial. Where is this going to put our community in when it comes to taxes, money, and my pocket? You're going to use our police force to straighten, back and back up the federal government? Are they going to pay this? Are they going to reimburse us for this? Or are they going to reimburse us for this? The training that our police department is going to get, are we going to pay for this? Or is the federal government going to pay for this? Okay? I come from New York, I come from Brooklyn. I've seen a lot of crime, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s. And when you use your police force against the community, the community will close down on you. They will never come to you. And that's why we had so many problems in New York. If you want to repeat that, then all, by all means, go ahead and do what you need to do and vote this in. But remember, you're opening up a can of worms. And if you're talking safety, this is not going to make the community any safer. That's all I have to say. And I told you I wasn't going to say the same thing. I wasn't emotional because I can be emotional. But I'm talking money, money. You will be out of office in a few months, a few years, but we're going to still be here. Thank you. And I'm sorry, but I have no filters in my mouth.
Ma'am, you are through.
Okay, I have no filters. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yana Maria Ruiz. Myself, I'm an immigrant. I came from Colombia, and I want to say that I thank America for every opportunity it has given me, especially for education-wise and everything. I'm about to head out to college. I understand there's so many things that people don't understand when it comes down to immigration. I have done it the legal way. My daddy's a US citizen. He ordered me and asked me and everything, and we have done. It's a long process, but we understand. The thing is, I feel like the only thing that the commissioners have to do is to make sure there is always transparency between what's happening to the public. Because of course, there has to be a legal way of doing things. We can just not come and do things wherever we want them. As an immigrant myself, I will say that. But the thing is, as long as the commissioners and like the local government demonstrates and opens the eyes for the others and explains how legally everything should be done, and there's transparency between them, I think it's understandable why this situation is happening. I understand it's a federal thing, that it cannot be controlled by here. They do, you guys are not the ones that could control the law and do it or make it that way. But in the, I feel like my only recommendation, because as myself, at some point, I was scared until I understood that I did it the legal way. But I understand that can be very scary for kids because I'm a kid myself. But what I'm saying is, as long as the government, like the local government finds a way to talk about this in a, in a transparent way to the public and make sure that people are going to, everything is going to be, do the right way, I feel like that's the most important focus right now because I understand that it has to be done at some point. And the only thing that I, like, the people I think should ask for, it's, I promise that it's going to be, follow the right way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Going once, going twice, don't. I will now close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Mr. City Manager, would you please really go through what's actually being requested and the ramifications and all of this so the audience can get a precise, clear understanding of what we are doing here and what we are not doing? A lot of what I've just heard is not what we will be doing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager for Public Safety, Charlie Byrd, and Police Chief Vance Monroe, who, to go through the item.
Yes, sir. So I'll start off and let Chief Monroe follow through. The proposal as it is, the MOA as it is, really, in fact, you know, people are offended by the fact that it's memorializing. It's memorializing a process that was already in place. It's not anything new that law enforcement's been doing. I've been a police officer for 31 years before I retired. Anytime that we came across, we made arrests. This is, we're dealing with people that we're going to be making arrests on. Whether you vote for this tonight or not, they will still go to the Bartow County Jail if they're charged with probable cause. They will still be looked at, they'll, fingerprints will be run, and if they hit and meet the, the requirements of being an illegal when they get identified, there's an ICE agent at the, at this, at the sheriff's office jail, who will then make the decision on whether or not that has to, that person's going to be sent to the processing center, of which there's not one here in Polk County. The sheriff won't take a person that has a, a immigration pickup order because it can't be held at the, at the county jail. The only place that can be held is, there's a facility in Orange County and a facility in Tampa. That's why the ICE agent is there. I think he's there during daytime hours, and that process will take place, whether you vote this in or not. That, that is, that is the process that takes place. Vance can, or Chief Monroe can speak to this himself. He still has control over his police department. I, I can tell you that in 31 years, and I retired as the police chief, and you know me, the majority of this audience knows me, the transparency with which this department does and holds its officers accountable. I am a little bit defensive in that regard, whenever people are saying that we're going to go around and do the things that they're saying that we're going to do, because we don't do that. And we hold people accountable. And I think Chief Monroe will be doing that. He still has control of his police department. This is simply, I like the analogy of a, a rock and a hard place. That is a hard rock and a hard place for all of us. In essence of being transparent, that's why we're here tonight. Because the chief can actually execute this memorandum of agreement. Someone said that, that's actually true. But we're trying to be transparent here. That's one step of it. And so no matter what they vote on, you know, I think people need to understand, it's a rock and a hard place. But with that said, when there's a law that's broken, we will do that. We will not be going out and knocking on people's doors and checking their immigration papers. We will not be going around doing roundups. In fact, there was a recent demonstration where our police officers walked hand in hand with folks that were immigrants. We didn't ask for papers, we're not going to start doing that. We're just complying. Chief?
Yes, I know this is an emotionally charged subject here, and we're talking about the federal level. But let's, let's talk about what it is for us, the local level, and what we're doing. I told you before.
Need to talk into the mic.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Like I said before, we are not going to go out here and start knocking down doors and asking people for their status. It's whenever we are called to a particular scene, traffic stops, whenever we're arresting individuals, those questions have to get asked because they got to get booked into the county jail. Those are questions that will be asked. We're not sitting around here, just sitting, sitting on the street corners with our, in our vehicle saying, hey, let me stop this person. Because what does an immigrant look like? I look like an immigrant. There's no special tool that we have in on our tool, on our belts that tells us this person's an immigrant. We're not going to sit up here and violate people's rights. We're going to do things that are lawful, that are come, that's from the state of Florida and federal law. That's what we are going to be doing. It's, some of the stuff that I heard here tonight, I understand it. I understand the fear. And one lady said, that, 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 from Columbia there, she said, you know, it's about transparency. We will be, we are going to be transparent. There's no other way to do this. There, there's, no matter what we say, or how we say it, there are people that are going to still feel that we are the strong arm of the federal government, regardless of our track record. We are not going to dress up, start jumping out, masking up, and snatching people up. That is not what we do. I know there's the commission here, I know the city manager, I know the assistant city manager, everyone here, understand that that is not who we are. There are cities that have been criticized for not signing this particular legislation, particularly Fort Myers. There's articles, I don't know anyone in particular that was down there, I can only speak about the articles, on why they were not able to, why they did not sign it. Once they did, once it was brought to their attention, the attorney general contacted them and pretty much told them that they were skirting the line to being a sanctuary city. That was the language that was used. We're going to follow the law, the rule of law. We have been doing this well before, I've been in law for 29 years. When I started, we would arrest a person that was not documented, we would call Customs at the time, they wouldn't respond, they wouldn't call back. If they did, they would say, just release the person. Now there are protocols in place because of Florida state statutes.
All right. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, any more discussion?
I want to say something. First of all, what has happened tonight is a prime example of why local government's so important. Everybody here, I suspect, is very frustrated with what's going on in Washington and Tallahassee and all over the place, but you don't have any opportunity to go to Washington DC and state your opinion. You do have the opportunity to come here and state your opinion to us, and we appreciate it. And this is what we signed up for, and we, and I completely understand your, your frustration. We're frustrated too. We didn't pass this law. What this is in essence is, the, the chief just talked about, the state passed this law, and they want us to, in essence, the way I
and they want us to, in essence, the way I understand it, they want us to, to basically state that we're not a sanctuary city. Number two, I think every city has passed this already in Polk County. I think we're the last ones to do this. I think, is that correct, Chief? Or, uh, I think you, isn't that, is that accurate? Or not? That's what I thought, but.
Talking to the chiefs, yes, sir. That's what I was told.
It's all the chiefs have passed, and Winter Haven's the last one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, um, what is, my question is this, I know, I, I read something somewhere where, where Grady was not comfortable with something, or he was not gonna pass something, or he wasn't gonna do something. What, do you know what I'm talking about? Cause that is in my mind, but I don't know the details about it. There was something that he refused to do, or he agreed to do, that he didn't wanna do, or something about that. Does, does that ring a bell?
I cannot recall that 100%. He didn't mention that at the police chief's.
It may have been that there's an, presently, there's an injunction, uh, as to the enforcement of state law, certain aspects of state law, that the federal court has criticized the Florida Attorney General on recently. I think that aspect of it may have been something that the sheriff may have mentioned, but that's still in flux.
Well, okay. Well, like I said, I understand everybody's frustration. We're frustrated. We don't wanna be up here doing this. This is not at all, well, we, we didn't pass this law. And in essence, I, I was, I was at a Florida League of Cities, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust meeting when, when Fort Myers vote, they were, they were tied, it was two to two, and the fifth person to vote was sitting next to me at a table. She's on the late, on the Fort Myers City Commission, and her phone started blowing up, and she had to leave the commission meeting to drive home, or she had to leave the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust to drive home to cast a vote to, to break the tie. And she was telling me that how much money was at stake if she had, if they didn't pass this. And it was seven figures for, for the Fort Myers Police Department. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't know, but that was her understanding, and that's what she told me. And I've asked the question repeatedly, or not around here a little bit, how much money is actually at stake here with our police department? And nobody knows, but there is some money at stake of, of, for our police department if, if we don't do this. Now, I don't know if it's a dollar or $10,000 or $100,000, but, um, what, how, how do we make that up? If we, if we don't get this, if the state cuts off our funding for our police department through grants or whatever, I don't know how, even how we get paid from the state, but.
Commissioner, what, what I'm understanding is that whether we approve it or not, it's gonna be done. Whether we approve it or not, this is something that's happening. Uh, uh, well, 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 this is a discussion with the commission. The public hearing is over. And if you keep making outbursts, I will have you removed. So this discussion is with the commissioners. I had the public hearing. We listen to what you had to say, and you're gonna listen to what we have to say, or you can be dismissed. All right, Commissioners.
I agree that, um, um, Sir Byrd, you were correct. This is putting us in a, between a rock and a hard place. And it's, uh, you know, when I, when I listen to this and, uh, read this and understand what I'm reading, and I think, uh, to the mayor's point, that, uh, if in fact, whatever we vote regardless, that this matter will be, uh, still move forward. And so we may, may make ourselves feel good that we stood out and, and went against something, but the fact is that it's not going to change the dynamics at all. In other words, I understand you were saying that it was brought here primarily because of our being transparent about this matter. But the fact is, uh, it's an issue that you will have to contend with as the police chief, am I correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we vote, we vote no on this, so what happens?
If you vote no on this, they can't sign it.
It can't, it can't be signed.
So it doesn't matter.
So then, then, then we will be subjected, then we would, then, then we will be subjected to, uh, the challenges of the state. And also funding for our police department and would be impacted negatively. And, uh, so that, that's an issue of safety within our community, which is, is your responsibility. And I know you uphold that with all, uh, you know, that, with the integrity and with the honor that you are sworn to do it. Um, you know, I, uh, I ran to serve the city. And, uh, one of the, uh, citizens alluded to the fact that we're, we're all a little up in age, thank God for that. Uh, it's good to get old. Hope that you'll get old. Uh, with that comes, uh, some wisdom and understanding. I'm old enough to remember Jim Crow. And, uh, I'm old enough to remember my grandmother and my mother and those who, uh, who suffered under oppression in this nation. And I love America, I love Winter Haven, I love the citizens. And, uh, again, I, I ran to serve. And, uh, I find it extremely difficult to, uh, agree to something that goes against everything that I stand for. And, uh, I will say to all of us tonight, remember this, that elections have consequences. I think we all understand that. If you don't understand it by now, you better go make sure your voter registration card is up to date.
Any more discussion?
Sorry, I'm sorry, we're in this vicarious situation, and it was designed to do just what it's doing. It was designed to put us against each other. And you know, we are the United States. But I'm wondering about that today. Because it looks like something is pulling us apart. If we allow, if we let it happen, it is up to us ultimately, we the people. We ultimately make the decisions. And so, uh, I'm sorry, you know, that, that we're put in this place, but it is also wonderful to see, uh, when the people raise up and speak truth to power and say what they need to say about matters that impact their lives.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say something.
Yes, go ahead.
As you said, it's, um, a very difficult decision, but we were elected to make those difficult decisions. I don't want to be one of the cities out there, and I think there's nobody else but us now, that would be a non-compliance. That's not a good position to be in. I quickly looked it up, and it said, you could face by not doing what the state has, um, you're out of compliance. Uh, you can face legal challenges, financial penalties and such, such as lawsuits, withholding of funds, et cetera. So we would be jeopardizing the police department and what they, their responses and duties to this community if we don't comply. Uh, and it's not that, like you said, that we're gonna be out there doing this kind of stuff. It is that we have to comply from the state. When you pass a federal law, you pass it down to the state, the state has to comply. They pass it down to the counties, to the cities, and we all have to comply with that. And we don't have a choice, or either we become non-compliant. And I don't think Winter Haven wants to be non-compliant.
All right. Anyone else? Is there any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, it's by the same sign.
Aye.
The motion passes three to one. All right, moving right along. Resolution, Resolution R. 25-29. 29, would you read about title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number R-25-29, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, affirmatively accepting the conveyance of that warranty deed from Gary M. Bennett to the city of Winter Haven, Florida, as more particularly described in the warranty deed executed and delivered by Gary M. Bennett to the city of Winter Haven, recorded on February 3rd, 2025, in official records book 13418, page 462, public records of Polk County, Florida, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, on January 30th of 2025, the closing of the transaction contemplated in a purchase and sale agreement took place, and Gary M. Bennett delivered a warranty deed for the real property to the city for the payment of $500,000. This is property that is located adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant three. Uh, Resolution R. 25-29 formally accepts the real property from Gary M. Bennett. Staff recommends city commission approve Resolution R-25-29. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, contain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, motion approved, R. 25-29, resolution.
Thank you. I'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and one wishing to speak to Resolution R. 25-29 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, it's by the same sign, hearing none. Resolution R. 25-29 is adopted. Resolution R. 25-30, would you read about title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution R-25-30, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, assigning the name of Willabook Drive to an unnamed approximate 70-foot platted right-of-way contained in the Willabook North subdivision, is recorded in plat book 214, pages four through 19, of the public records of Polk County, Florida, making findings, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting resolutions, and an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, uh, March 10th, 2025, the commission approved the Willabook North subdivision, Platt, as part of this subdivision, the developer dedicated an approximate 70-foot wide right-of-way to the city for use in constructing a future collector road connecting Lucerne Park Road and Martin Luther King Boulevard. Subdivision Platt did not provide a name for this right-of-way. Staff proposes to assign Willabook Drive to the unnamed right-of-way platted, uh, by Willabook North. This is consistent with the platted right-of-way that is located in the Willabook South portion of the Platt, which you can see on your screen. Polk County nine, E911, indicated they have no objections to this proposed name. If the resolution is approved by the commission, Polk County E911 Addressing Office will notify affected emergency response agencies, other government agencies, and any affected property owners. Staff recommends city commission approve Resolution R. 25-30, an authorized city manager and or designated to take all necessary actions to implement the road naming authorized by the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor? Motion to approve R. 25-31.
30.
30, excuse me, R. 31-30, name it Willabook Drive.
All right. Close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and one wishing to speak to R. 25-30 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, it's by the same sign, hearing none. R. 25-30 is adopted. R. 25-31, would you read about title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution R-25-31, a resolution confirming the acceptance of improvements, infrastructure, and dedications in favor of the public slash city of Winter Haven, as notated on that certain plat entitled Villamar, Phase 7, recorded in the office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court in Fort Polk County, Florida, in plat book 211, pages 50 through 57, public records of Polk County, Florida, and authorizing the city manager to release the performance bond posted to gear de-completion of required improvements in infrastructure. The general location, subdivision is generally located north of Thompson Nursery Road realignment and south of Eloise Loop Road. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, City Commissioners, Vmar DEV LLC requests the city commission accept certain improvements and dedications in favor of the city as noted on the plat for Villamar, Phase 7. This includes 108.7 plus or minus acres and contains 300, 393 building lots and seven common lots. All water lines, sewer lines, reuse lines, and related infrastructure will be owned and maintained by the city. However, all internal roadways, street lighting, and all stormwater-related infrastructure will be owned and maintained by the Villamar Community Development District. The developer submitted a performance bond in the amount of $391,435 to guarantee completion of all required infrastructure and improvements for the subdivision. Recent inspections by staff found that all incomplete improvements are now complete, and the water, wastewater, and reuse utilities can now be accepted by the city. Staff recommends the city commission approve Resolution R. 25-31, and authorize the city manager designated to take all necessary actions related to the same. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Motion to approve Resolution R. 25-31.
Thank you. I'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and one wishing to speak to Resolution R. 25-31 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting, in the discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, it's by the same sign, hearing none. R. 25-31 is adopted. R. 25-32, would you read about title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number R-25-32, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, approving that certain amendment number two for extension of public transportation grant agreement between the state of Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, and the city of Winter Haven under the public transportation grant agreement under financial management number 449546-1, -94-01 for funding for the design and construction of a road to connect Logistics Parkway to Pollard Road, and authorizing the city manager and appropriate city officials to execute said amendment number two, and to take all of the necessary actions regarding said amendment number two and the project, providing for severability conflicts for the administrative correction of scrupulous errors, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, on January 30th of 2023, the city and FDOT entered into public transportation grant in the amount of $3 million. This grant is for the reconstruction of Pollard Road and the extension of Logistics Parkway to connect the two roadways. Resolution 25-32 authorizes the city manager designated to execute amendment two that extends the grant agreement until January 6th of 2027, providing additional time to complete the project due to environmental permitting for stormwater retention and land acquisition. There's no financial impacts associated with amendment two. This does put the grant completion timeframe on the same path as the Florida Commerce, Florida Job Growth Infrastructure Grant, uh, which was also awarded at that same time. Staff recommends the city commission approve Resolution R. 25-32 for amendment two to the Florida Department of Transportation Public Transportation Grant, and authorizes the city manager designated to take all other appropriate, uh, actions related to the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Motion to approve R. 25-32.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting and open the public hearing, and one wishing to speak to Resolution R. 25-32 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, it's by the same sign, hearing none. Resolution R. 25-32 is adopted. We have some auditors' first reading, the second reading will be on, uh, July 14th. Ordinance O. 25-21, would you read about title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-25-21, and ordinance amending ordinance 23-25 to 2035 Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan by revising the Future Land Use Map Series by amending the future land use on a parcel from neighborhood suburban future land use to neighborhood mixed-use hub future land use, assigning neighborhood mixed, assigning neighborhood mixed-use hub future land use to an annexed parcel, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with, providing for the administrative correction of scrupulous errors, and providing an effective date. General location, 807 Snively Avenue, the northeast corner of Snively Avenue and Eloise Loop Road. The area covered by this request is 33 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, Arc Industries, Inc., requests the city amend the 2035 future land use on a 0.64-acre parcel from neighborhood suburban future land use to neighborhood mixed-use hub future land use, and to assign neighborhood mixed-use hub future land use to a 32.4-acre annexed parcel, and to assign commercial highway C3 zoning district to two annexed parcels. These total 33.0 plus or minus acres. A small portion of the subject property has been in the city since 2007, however, the majority of the property was annexed into the city February 24th, 2025. This property is intended to be the new campus for Cypress Junction Montessori, uh, charter school, a public charter school here in Winter Haven, and I see the head of school is here along with representatives, uh, and I see the head of school is here along with representatives from the engineering team. The scheduled opening date for this new facility is for the 26, 27 school year, so August of 2026. City potable water and wastewater infrastructure is located near the area subject to these requests and will be extended to the property by the petitioner or their successors at the time of development. The subject area is designated as residential suburban by Polk County Future Land Use Maps. The requested neighborhood mixed-use hub future land use is consistent with the subject area's location at the intersection of two collector roadways and the mixed-use character of Snively Avenue Rifle Range Road corridor. Additionally, the requested C3 zoning district is consistent with the requested neighborhood mixed-use hub future land use. The planning commission on June 3rd of 2025 voted to recommend approval of these requests. There were no members of the public who spoke in favor or opposition to the requests. Staff recommends the commission advance ordinance O. 25-21 to second reading to take place two weeks from this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this ordinance, you may do so at this time. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Ordinance O. 2522, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-25-22, an ordinance amending chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, by assigning commercial highway C3 zoning district to two annexed parcels, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrupulous errors, and providing an effective date. General location, 807 Snively Avenue, the northeast corner of Snively Avenue and Eloise Loop Road. The area covered by this request is 33 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a companion ordinance that speaks to the assignment of the aforementioned zoning. Staff recommends that this item be advanced to second reading two weeks from this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll have our second reading on July 14th. However, if there's anyone that would like to speak to this particular ordinance, you may do so at this time. All right, seeing none, we'll move right along. New business, 13A, City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This item pertains to an agreement for purchase and sale of real property located at 801 Cypress Gardens Boulevard. City has coordinated with the Florida Department of Transportation on intersection improvements along the Cypress Gardens Boulevard for the past several years. Two entities identified the intersections at 6th, 8th, and 9th Streets Southeast as needing improvements to accommodate future growth. Should also note that the improvements that were recently completed at US Highway 17, as well as at 1st Street, were part of those same discussions. As a result of the identification of the needed improvements further east on Cypress Gardens Boulevard, the city had appropriated $1.5 million in fiscal year 21 within the transportation fund to help advance future improvements to be made by FDOT. One of the primary areas of concern is the intersection at Cypress Gardens Boulevard and 9th Streets Southeast. I think we have a slide that dictates or illustrates that, if we could pull that up. In partnership with FDOT, staff explored the potential for realigning 8th, 9th Streets to create a more effective and appropriate intersection. As it stands today, traffic that is coming south on 8th Street is diverting through private property adjacent to TD Bank and exiting at the intersection that happens to be signalized at a driveway versus an actual road. We attempted to acquire this property several years back, but were unsuccessful as it was purchased by another buyer. The property has recently become available again. Staff confirmed with FDOT staff their continued support of the realignment concept and the use of the property if it could be acquired. An appraisal was completed on May 1st of this year, establishing the current market value at $1.45 million. Staff presented a verbal offer to the owner's representative, which was favorably received. That offer is contingent upon city commission approval as well as our completion and favorable receipt of the due diligence efforts that will need to take place. If the property is acquired, the existing structures will ultimately be raised, and the right-of-way needed to make the improvements will be ultimately dedicated to FDOT. The improvements of the intersection, including design and construction, will be the responsibility of DOT. There's not yet a timeframe or funding appropriation for FDOT's work. As you can understand, they work off of a five-year work plan. If we acquire this now, they will work to advance those designs and construction parameters within that plan. The purchase price of the property is $1.45 million, which is consistent with the appraisal. Funding for this purchase will come from the transportation fund, which has $1.9 million appropriated for intersection improvements at this corridor. The... In moving forward with this, again, this is one of those projects that we've been looking at really since about 2017 in order to make the improvements at that intersection, particularly with the amount of growth and development that is occurring further south in Harmony Development and in surrounding areas. Improvements to this intersection have been identified as something that is much needed. Staff does recommend that the city commission approve the agreement for purchase and sale of real property at 801 Cypress Gardens Boulevard, and authorize city manager to execute the agreement and take any and all actions necessarily and related to the acquisition. As a note, the closing for this, there's a couple factors that will influence the closing. First of all, there has to be, if the commission approves this this evening, there is a first right of refusal that is factored into the existing commercial lease for a tenant that is on that property. I believe they have 30 days in which to respond to either accept or forego that first right of refusal. Once we have a decision on that, or they have made a decision, we will commence our due diligence period. That is established at 60 days with the opportunity for a 45-day extension. There is also a termination clause within that commercial lease between the owner and the tenant that calls for a 180-day notice of termination. I would not recommend that the city take on the role of landlord, and so we would, if, unless that tenant chooses to vacate the property sooner, we would wait to do our closing until that 180-day termination notice has been completed. So by my calculation, the latest that that would occur is sometime on or around January 19th. However, we would be locked into the purchase as soon as we have completed a due diligence assessment and are agreeable to conditions on the property.
All right, thank you.
Good question. I just, T, I just want to make sure you're going to do an environmental land study?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm going to gas station forever.
And as we understand, all the tanks have been removed, and there has already been a phase 1 that occurred with the most recent purchase. It was, I believe, probably three years ago. And so we will get access to all of those reports as well, but we will conduct our own phase 1 and phase 2 environmental assessment. And anything else we need to look at there?
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, contain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Move to approve agreement for purchase and sale of 801 Cypress Gardens Boulevard.
All right. I will now close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and one wishing to speak to this item can do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, opposed by the same sign, hearing none. We are going to make an offer to purchase some land at $1.45 million. All right, 13B, would you read by, well, take that on, City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So through the supplemental appropriation for Hurricanes Helene and Milton, the US EPA has provided $1.6 billion in federal funding to Florida's Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and Clean Water State Revolving Fund to support eligible recovery and resilience projects. The funding pursuit via the Clean Water State Revolving Fund is as follows. The city is going to pursue funds that would potentially grant the city up to 100% loan forgiveness. This is based upon Winter Haven's per capita income in comparison to Florida's state average, and that would afford us the opportunity to pursue loan forgiveness. The pursuit will prioritize projects in the following ranked order. First would be wastewater treatment plant 2 decommissioning and new transfer slash master pump station. That is totaling out at $33,709,521. Second project is a new force main from wastewater treatment plant number 2 to the lift station 1050. That is a $52,701,250 project. And then wastewater treatment plant 3, headworks improvements. This is estimated at $7,880,113 for a total request of $94,290,884. These are projects that are identified within our five-year CIP. The state is certainly not expected to grant nearly $94.29 million to a single municipality, but they have asked for a ranked project list to appropriately fund the various utility systems. The anticipated award is more likely somewhere in the range of $20 to $40 million. However, staff is making a strategic decision to request the full amount. This allows for maximum potential funding, particularly if the pool of applicants is small, and places the responsibility back on DEP to adjust the allocation downward without consequence to the city's application. The application stems from hurricane-induced power loss at wastewater treatment plant number 2, recognizing plant 2's aging infrastructure and the city's ongoing efforts to consolidate wastewater treatment plants into a single site. Choice has been made to decommission plant 2 and remove the flow to plant 3. The decision proactively avoids future storm-related issues at plant 2. Therefore, in response to hurricane, staff is requesting funding to bypass plant 2 and transfer the flow to plant 3, which meets advanced wastewater treatment criteria for treatment levels and is more resilient to storm impacts. We bring this before you to get approval with submitting applications to DEP for these grant awards. The application deadline for submission is June 30th of this year, so you will not meet again until after that. So hence its placement on this evening's agenda. There's no financial impacts associated with the submission of the applications. Staff recommends the city commission approve the submission of the FDEP Hurricane Relief Fund SRF grant application and authorize the city manager or designated to take all necessary actions required for the application process. So if we're successful and we're one of only a few that apply, we could offset a significant cost within our five-year CIP. We realistically think that we are in a prime position to be awarded between $20 and $40 million for those projects.
All right, Commissioners, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 13B FDIP Hurricane Relief Funding.
All right, I'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and one wishing to speak to this item may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, opposed by the same sign, hearing none. The item passes. 13C?
Mayor Commissioners, this is just an informational item. It does not require any city commission action, but we certainly wanted you to be aware of it. Pertains to the intersection of Avenue C Southwest and 3rd Street, and a study that was conducted by Kimley Horn and Associates at staff's request looking at that intersection. When we redesigned Avenue C as a complete street a few years back, we looked at this intersection similar to as we had done several others over the past 20 years in downtown that were signalized intersections to determine if there would be a more efficient operation of that intersection as an always-stop. So Kimley Horn did perform that traffic evaluation of the intersection. And we'll say the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which we refer to as the MUTCD, it doesn't provide specific warrants for the removal of existing controls, but it does provide guidance for evaluating the installation or removal of traffic control signals. Based upon what the evaluation came back with, it is the recommendation that an always-stop control be installed at this intersection as opposed to a signalized intersection. Your memo that is included in your fact sheet illustrates the timeline which this would happen. That includes beginning on July 7th of this year, installation of informational signage at the intersection to notify the public of the changes. On July 21st, the signals would be switched to flashing red for all approaches, so it'll be set up as an always-stop with the red ball flashing for all approaches. That will continue for a minimum of 90 days, throughout which periodic observation of the morning and evening peak times will be conducted. On or about October 20th of this year, the signal heads will be removed, and a plan for removing the spans will be finalized after coordination with overhead utility owners. This is the exact same process that we have done over time at Avenue G and 6th Streets Southwest, further up on 3rd Street at Magnolia, Avenue A Southwest, Avenue A Northwest, Avenue B Northwest, and at 2nd Street, and Avenue B Northwest as well. So again, it's just informational. We want you to be aware of it. We do think that this improves traffic flow in that area, and we'll share more as we get closer to that conversion. But team is here to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leozon reports. Commissioner Mercer?
I attended the Polk TPO Board meeting, and one of the things that we talked about was advanced air mobility. And we were discussing how drones will fly in the first 400 feet, and they're called eVTOL, I guess it's called. They're flying the 1,000 to 300, that's a small airplane, a small level. And we talked about then, they're going to start out piloted, but they will become unpiloted after a while. And then we talked a little bit about veraports, heliports, and airports. So, and so there was a lot to, you know, to learn. I think I spoke one time before about the planes, the small ones, and the private, and how much it costs and things like that because DOT had given an update at the League of Cities. And so it's just kind of interesting to, you know, that we know it's coming. And they said that the need for electrical charging would still be at these veraports, heliports, whatever, and, of course, they would have to be charged. Okay, I attended the Reg League of Cities meeting in Davenport, was the host city. Attended the Juneteenth Annual Celebration, that was our fourth one. And then the Polk County All Sports and Hall of Fame. And it's interesting to go and watch the young, and then also those sports that those people have made it and have had a lot of significance, you know, to their life with that. And a lot of them, I think two of them this year had died before they got awarded the Sports Hall of Fame there. So I would have liked it better if they'd have done it what time they were still alive. I think that, you know, makes it a lot better. So, but you have some great kids coming up through the golfer, the tennis player, the whatever that were in that group, you know, and are really, probably, we're going to read about them a little later on, too. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner Dolison? Evening, Mr. Mayor, and to the city staff and the city manager. I had the opportunity to share in the Polk Historical Society annual pioneer luncheon, which indeed honored the two individuals here tonight. Well-deserved, and I was happy to be a part of that. It was really a first-class event, and two people well-deserving of that honor. Also, was able to participate in, I call it the best class of leadership in Winter Haven, Class 44, and graduation. And I've got a couple classmates back there in the back. And so it was just, you know, it was amazing. Enjoyed really the camaraderie, meeting some amazing people in our city, and learning a lot about, you know, things that you, you know, you just thought you understood, but really until you took a real close look. And I really enjoyed just the opportunity. So I want to thank the city for supporting me in that effort. It really was a blessing, that opportunity for me as a servant in the city of Winter Haven. Also, Father's Day Luncheon, you know, Neighbor Service Center. Love going there, and there's some amazing, wonderful people there. And I have been going there for a lot of years, and that's why I've known a lot of those. those precious people, and they're doing a wonderful job. I was so happy to see the service center, you know, back up, running, and doing an excellent, outstanding job, and they're really making themselves known throughout the community. Also, was able to participate in the Juneteenth Celebration, as Commissioner Mercer shared, and I want to, you know, say kudos to the committee and to City Staff, and Rec, and Parks, and all the other staff supporting this event. You have, every year, you guys seem to just do this at a level that I think other cities would really take note. I appreciate the celebration. I know that there's a word, two words, well, three words actually we don't like to use, and DEI. And, but you've got to remember what we're celebrating on Juneteenth. We're actually celebrating freedom. And because freedom didn't come to everybody, some had to wait to hear the news, but thank God it did come, and we certainly appreciate that. Closing, I want to say tonight, I know that was a, you know, spirited discussion that we overheard tonight, and I want to say, and I don't want to rehash anything, but I just want to say this because it's on my heart to say it, and I want to say to Assistant Manager Bird, and to Law Enforcement Chief, and all your staff, by no means my vote was any measure against what you guys stand for, what you represent. I support you wholeheartedly, and I regret again the fact that we were put in such a very difficult position. Here's what I've learned over the years. My heart and my head have to be in agreement, and when they're not, I've got to go with my heart. And so I want you to know tonight that I know that, you know, we are challenged on many fronts, and I know that sometimes you have to make the difficult choices, and I'm not here for popularity, I'm not here to be known or just seen, but I'm here to serve. So it's an honor and a privilege to be able to serve, and if I don't have this chance again, I'm okay with that, too. I was living before I came here, and the Lord has been gracious and good to me, so thank you for the privilege.
Mayor, can I go back on mine?
No.
I forgot the veterans thing out front on Saturday. I did attend the Veterans Memorial that they put out there, and they had, of course, I got to talk to Dersch and two former City Commissioners, but they did look up residents of Winter Haven that had died as veterans in combat, I guess. And so they started back in World War I, II, Vietnam, and Korean, I guess it's before. I was trying to think. But anyway, they are, it is out front, the most, the corner towards the building, Norma Mail.
Norma Mail.
Yeah, Norma Mail. Oh, I wish we'd named that something else. But anyway, and Parks and Rec, you know, they did a real nice setup there. They had the salute, the gun salute and everything, and it was extremely hot, and they were trying to keep it short. So, but it was very nice. If you get a chance, go out and look at Marker there.
Thank you. Commissioner Dassler?
Not much for me. I've been on this commission almost 13 years, and this is the first time I've got nothing really to report on, because I went out to LA for supposed, I had a five-day plane ticket, ended up spending almost two and a half weeks out there with my son with some medical stuff. But I want to thank my commissioners for carrying the weight for me. I'm sorry I'm just all the fun stuff, but I would have certainly been there. And I know emotions were high tonight, and boy, but if you want to know about emotions, go to LA and downtown LA where he lives. He lives about an hour, about a mile and a half from where the riots were, and we had 8 o'clock curfew, and there were helicopters everywhere and police cars everywhere, and it was, I totally understand where everybody's coming from, because you see that stuff on the news, and it's terrifying, truthfully. I mean, there were places we couldn't go. We had an app, we had to see where we couldn't go and couldn't do, and it's scary to think that maybe one day that ends up here, but I understand where everybody was coming from. This was a tough one tonight, and even though we voted for it, it doesn't mean we necessarily, what we support, what we don't support, this was something that I felt like, you know, and if you want to say, hey, there's no statutory rules that going to allow people to withhold money from us from Tallahassee, well, you're being naive, because they know how to do it. It happened to Fort Myers, and it's going, and it can happen, and if we're, but if we as a commissioner are willing to stand at the front line and file lawsuits, and everybody knows I'm not afraid of filing lawsuits, I've pushed this many times to file lawsuits. So that's what would have been next for us, had we done, if we hadn't done this, we would have been involved in a bunch of lawsuits. Now, whether that's right or wrong, that's for other people to decide, but that's what was next, if we hadn't done what we did. So I wish it hadn't come down to this, but this all started in Tallahassee, not Winter Haven, and it's just, it's just an unfortunate situation where we are, but here we are. So, but I thank my commissioners for carrying for me for the last three weeks, because I'm in and out of town. So anyway, that's it for me, Mayor.
All right, and I'm going to take your time, since.
Okay.
Now, one of the highlights that I had was the, I'm the chairman of the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and we met at the Bartow Airport, and I got to see firsthand a remote air traffic control tower. And I'm telling you, I was really, really, really impressed. And what impressed me is that looking at a screen straight ahead, that you could see 360 around the top. I'd never seen anything like that. There was a truck that was on one end, and what they did is showed the front of it, and then they showed the back of it on this end. I'm saying, how could they do that? But it was a 360 view. It was not, you know, you, 360s, you turn all around, you're looking straight ahead. But anyway, that was, I was really impressed with that. Attended the TPO meeting, went to the little celebration for the 44th graduation of the Leadership Winter Haven, the Juneteenth, the TPO's LCB meeting that takes place, which is the, basically for the handicapped and the really disadvantaged people of transportation. Attended the, did a greetings at the Scholarship banquet at my church. I had a very busy weekend, attended two, three services on Sunday, gave a greetings to the Masons at one church. I'm saying, man, I'm feeling like a preacher. Enjoyed the food at the Father's Day Luncheon, and then finally, I really enjoyed the Juneteenth and this past Saturday, my leadership development program at the Florence Villas CD C had their Juneteenth celebration program. So all in all, it was good. With that being said, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, nothing this evening tonight.
Right, City Manager, I see you have something else?
Yes, sir. A couple items. First is Item 16A, which is, we have the Florida League of Cities 2025 Annual Conference that will take place, I believe it's in August. And as is normally the practice, we ask that you authorize one member of the commission who will be in attendance to vote during the annual business session. So if you can tell us who that would be amongst those that are present, we will submit that paperwork to the Florida League.
I'm there. I'm usually the voter. That's my figure. All right.
Okay, we will submit that. A motion?
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve Mayor Birdsong as our delegate, Florida League.
Open the public hearing, see if there's anyone would like to speak to that particular item. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting and the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it's by the same side, hearing none. I will be the voting delegate.
The next item for your informational purposes, I wanted to take a minute to introduce our new Affordable Housing Compliance Manager, Miss Nancy Hurley. Nancy is joining us from Polk County, a very well-experienced, tenured employee within the affordable housing arena. So Nancy, if you want to take a minute, just introduce yourself to the commission.
Thank you. Again, my name's Nancy Hurley, and I come from Polk County, but I'm really happy to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with Cedric and a wonderful team. And I think we have a lot of work to do and a lot of fun things to do here at the city of Winter Haven, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
So she will work directly with our SHIP program. Commissioner Dassler, you serve as the voting member on the A-hack. You'll get to see her quite a bit. She is filling the role that was vacated upon the retirement of Ms. Diane Dur several months back, so we are excited to have Nancy and her expertise.
I have to tell you, Nancy, I know you're excited for your new job, but there's one person that's more excited, and he's sitting right next to you, Eric.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nancy. Last item, Commissioners, is Commissioner Mercer, you mentioned the information on advanced air mobility. Mayor Birdsong, you mentioned the information on remote air traffic control systems. Just as a reminder, myself, along with Winter Haven Regional Airport Director Troy Heidel, will be flying out long before most people are awake on Wednesday morning to Atlantic City to observe firsthand a remote air traffic control system that is being studied very closely by FAA, and to give us some insights on that. I understand General Jake Palumbo, who is a member of our Airport Safety Committee, is going to be in DC at the same time, and is going to join us there to observe that. This is a whirlwind trip. I think we leave out at sometime around a 5:00 AM flight, and we are back in town around midnight, so.
Wow.
I will be reporting back to you on what we learned.
Which airport are you, will it be?
It is Atlantic City. I'm trying to think what the call sign is for it. I will email that out to all of you. I don't know the name off the top of my head. Apologize.
No problem.
Actually, I may have it.
Yeah, I was just, you know, curious as to the size of that airport, you know, I'm assuming that is a particular site because of its.
It is ACY is the call for it, so I'm not sure what the, if there's another name for it. That's all I have this evening, sir. Thank you.
Deputy City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I just wanted to mention, Wednesday night, I brought up that they were going to be transitioning our servers, taking a number of systems offline. That all went smoothly. I just want to give kudos to our IT team, who worked very hard all weekend long to make sure that that went as smoothly as it did, so that's all.
City Clerk?
Nothing this evening for me.
Deputy City Clerk? Emergency mail does not receive for the agenda. Motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned.